September 19th, 2017, meeting of the Islam Metal Planning Board. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Notify the people that we are recording this meeting for the minutes and also on tape for LCAP. May I ask if anyone else here is recording the meeting? Hearing none, we can proceed. First order of business is a preliminary subdivision for Red Rock Pond Estates. Is someone here to present to us? Nothing we need to read on this one. Do you want to tell us what you're planning on doing? We do have plans here.
Can I set up the board?
Yeah, please do. You can do it so that the audience can see it as well, it would be great. If you could do that.
Yeah, where are they?
They are in town reports on the Red Rock Pond Estates. That's it.
This is from Paul Morsette, Fire Chief. As previously -- okay, the submitted plans show the street width curb to curb at 22 feet. This is too narrow in less than previous subdivisions. Devonshire Terrace has a similar style turnaround, but with a 24 width curb cut. While this better is still, doesn't leave a lot of room if cars are parked on both sides of the road. Can the planning board require no parking signs for one side of the street? Turnaround look will work fine with a 50-foot radius as shown. Also, the plans do not show any fire hydrants. There must be -- these must be shown on the plans in space no greater than 500 feet apart. Also, hydrants must be installed within the hydrant markers. That's from Paul Morsette. This is from our police chief. If possible, my initial thoughts is continuation of the Redstone Drive by connecting the cul-de-sac. I understand arguments could be made related to cost, wetlands, reduced building lots, or possible future expansion of proposed streets. Connection of cul-de-sacs would allow better traffic flow, access to any one address from two different directions, and remove the cul-de-sacs as a place for occupied motor vehicles to loiter at. Other benefits of connecting the streets that are not of a police matter may be for DPW to weigh in on our better flow of water service which maintains quality of water in the line. Snow plowing that island cul-de-sac got to be challenging and reduce the street width even more. No parking signs were authorized by, I believe, the sport selectmen in the past, probably based on our recommendation and/or complaints from citizens. I'm not sure if the authorization of no parking posting is in the hands of the council members or the town manager now. Here is a letter from Timothy Kuhn from Russo Surveyors and Engineers. Dear Robin, I have reviewed the cover sheet dated September 6th, 2017, and the preliminary plans for Red Rock Pond Estates revised 8/18/17 by Sherman and Frederick LLC to address your initial comments dated August 8, 2017. My comments are as follow. The planning board will need to decide whether or not to grant the requested waivers for a 50-foot right-of-way in a 22-foot wide paved road to match the existing Redstone Drive where 60 and 30 feet wide are required respectively. The loop at the end of the street appears to meet the requirements for dead-end streets. However, Section 6.2.6.3 of the subdivision regulation states that future maintenance of an island within a cul-de-sac shall be the responsibility of a homeowners association. If the planning board chooses to approve the loop configuration, the applicant will need to set up a homeowners association to maintain the required cul-de-sac plantings within the island. The need for a homeowners association could be eliminated by switching to a typical turnaround without a center island. Number three, proposed subdivision will result in the increased length of the dead-end street from approximately 2,050 feet to approximately 2,600 feet, and an increase in the number of potential residential dwellings on the dead-end street from 24 currently approved to 38. In accordance with Section 6.2.6.1 of subdivision regulations, the planning board will need to consider the potential impacts to public safety in determining whether to allow the extension of the dead-end street which already exists, exceeds the standard maximum length of 900 feet. I recommend that the planning board seek the opinion of the local emergency services, police, and fire regarding the potential public safety impact of lengthening the street and adding more residences. One measure that could potentially reduce public safety impacts would be installing a wider pavement width. A wider pavement width would improve the chances that emergency vehicles could drive around the potential obstructions in the roadway to attend to the emergency situation at the end of the cul-de-sac. Number four, as pointed out in your previous comments, the definitive plan, subdivision plan, will require more detail, including a field delineation of the wetlands and a field survey of the existing topography. The applicant should understand that based on the more detailed information regarding the existing conditions, they may have to adjust the roadway and lot layout, which may result in reduction in the number of lots. If there's any questions, the phone number is listed here sincerely. Timothy Kuhn, P.D. That's it.
Would you like to tell us what you're planning on doing?
Sure. My name is Don Frederick from Sherman &amp; Frederick Land Surveying Engineering. The applicant for the project is Bedrock Financial, Mr. Al Joyce. The current owners of the parcel is Daniel Venkens and Keith Linder. As was read, we're proposing a 20-lot subdivision on Redstone Drive. This is an overall view. I don't know if you can all see that and try to still have the audience see it, but that's okay. This is Elm Street here, Maynard Street is the current Redstone Drive, an extension of the cul-de-sac on Redstone Drive with four lots in this area, and then, I'm sorry, six lots in that area, and then a new road. Red Rock Pond Estates here with the loop configuration has 14 lots for a total of 20 lots. We are asking for a 50-foot right-of-way and 22-foot pavement to match the existing pavement. We have shown some concept drainage on the preliminary plan to include at the end of the cul-de-sac out towards the wetlands and down through the low point of the road along the back through a stormwater management area and then to some wetlands on the northwest side of the project. This is a little more detailed plan of Red Rock Road itself with the profile. You can see it starts out, ends up in a low point down in this area, and then out to the loop road. We are planning on the extension of the water main. Did hear your comment about the hydrants. I'm not sure if they're shown on here, but if they're not, they're obviously would be on definitive plan to the 500-foot standard. The plan right now is to extend the sewer from the road since there is a low point to where it gets back to the other sewer that we have to have a pump station if they were to serve these lots by sewer. We are also including a sidewalk on one side. Our initial submission to you included no sidewalk with the request for a waiver, but based on the comments from the planner, said that was pretty much not going to happen. So, our revision included a sidewalk on one side of the road. As was read from the comments letter, we know this is only preliminary based on existing information as far as topo and wetlands and so forth, so there would have to be a field survey, wetland delineation, drainage calculations, and so forth for a definitive submission. Thank you.
Okay. For opening up to the board, I have a couple of comments my own because I've had a chance to study this, some detail. I have a problem with the fact that you've got two lots plus the islands that are not owned by anybody. You've got one in the back there that's totally isolated. You're creating an orphan lot in the back, and you've got something that's called a stormwater lot that does not have an owner. Typically, we require that stormwater easements be on a lot, that we do not have a separate lot that would be commonly owned, because that does not work. We've learned that the hard way. And this lot in back here is marked road right right-of-way, and I don't understand that at all.
I think that was actually revised to be included as part of Lot 6, because that was one of the comments that came in.
Okay, and look, the plans I had, these may not be the revised plans, because this is what was included in the...
It was a resubmission, and that was one of the comments from the planner, so that I believe the lot was combined total with the parcel in the back.
So, this is going to be combined with Lot 6?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm a little concerned when I saw that the stormwater outlet on that stormwater lot is basically just shown as an outflow at an elevation of approximately 210. And I noticed that the lots on Harwich Road are lower than that, so that it appeared that the stormwater outflow would just go into the backyards on Harwich Road. There was no control or treatment of the stormwater shown.
Actually, that stormwater, based on preliminary plans, obviously, we don't have detailed topography and so forth. The plan would be to take it from the low point along the backs of these lots and then into a stormwater area before it gets to the wetlands down on that Lot 6.
Okay, that wasn't shown at all on plan, and so it was worrying to me that we'd have putting stormwater as shown on the plan.
I think the revised plans, I believe, included an easement back through there so that the water would flow either through a swale or a closed drainage system, depending how the design worked out. And it would not, obviously, we would not be able to impact the rear or any parts of those lots along the back there.
Okay. And I am also concerned that it didn't show water and sewer lines on the plan. Typically, DPW in the past has required that water lines be looped so that they don't have dead ends on the water. Is that possible to do with this subdivision, either through Redstone or Harwich?
The problem with any kind of loop, or there was also a comment from, I think it was the police chief, about connecting the roads. Based on Mass GIS, this area in through here is now a wetland, so it would be either difficult or impossible to cross it. If it's a requirement, we could certainly look in the definitive to if it would be able to connect either through an easement along the perimeter of it and get around that wetland. But I don't think I could give you that answer until we get into the definitive delineation of the wetland.
One thing we've done in the past, particularly Orchard Road, when the subdivision went in up there, was to provide an outlet to another street that was gated off, where the fire department, police department had keys to the locks, so that they could get in there if things were blocked. And if that were done out to Harwich Road, it would really simplify the situation, because if there were an issue on Redstone Drive, they could open a gate at the end of Harwich. It would prevent it from being a drive-through, a cut-through, which is not what we want, because Elm Street right now, you have to go all the way down to Maple Shade in order to get around.
Just looking, I wasn't quite sure where Harwich Road was until I was looking at it, but it does appear that Harwich Road currently, that right-of-way ends at our property, so that's certainly something that could be looked at.
Yeah, I think that's something I think you ought to take a really hard look at, because that way you could, you might still need the cul-de-sac and the turnaround, because you're going to have to turn around there somewhere, but it would give you a way to have the additional access.
Sure.
Which would be important. I'm also a little concerned, the subdivision rules for preliminary ask for a pre and post topography, and I don't really see a post-topography here, a proposed new topography, except for the road.
Oh, for the grading of the lots?
Yeah, because I've walked that property, and I know that the way it is right now, you can't build on it.
Right. As you can see from the contours, they're up and down everywhere, and so there would, I'm assuming you must have looked at the lots, Al, and it would have to be your earthwork, obviously, to...
I build in Munson. Have you ever been in Munson? I look at that parcel, and to me, it looks flat.
Well, okay, we'll talk more about that, but those are my immediate concerns. I'm turning it over to the board. Lou, do you have any comments?
No.
Russell?
No.
Yeah?
At this point, I haven't had enough time to absorb it, and you said there is a release of sequential plans that have been done after this?
Would have a revision.
These are made at 7/21.
Is there a revision date in the bottom? No.
No, there is not.
There are revised plans that were submitted.
Okay, I don't know where those were...
Were they submitted to the planning department?
They were, yeah, they were turned into the planning department quite six weeks ago. Seven copies of all the revised plans.
I have no idea where they were.
I'll look for them.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
And I don't want to spend too much time on it, but one thing that has been repeated over and over is the width of the road. Is that something that's a possibility?
Yes.
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 So, we wouldn't be cringing on any square footage of the lot?
We would make it work.
Resi, okay.
Because if we got that from the police, you'd have to keep the police happy.
Well, speaking to that, though, 22 feet, under the zoning bylaw, 22 feet is not considered a public way. If you look at the A&R section of the bylaw, of the, I'm sorry, of the subdivision regulations, it states that if you're going to do an A&R, it has to be 24 feet wide of paved. So, that would not, couldn't properly not be accepted as a public way.
We will make that 24 feet, because that, I don't know if we're done here, but the one thing that really didn't come up here is that up to this point, right around here, Redstone, right around here, Redstone is a public way.
Yes.
And then it becomes a private way.
And it's 26 feet now.
So, that whole section, we would make into a public way. And I think that would actually improve safety, because if anyone's ever driven down there, it just comes to a stop. There's no, right now, if a fire truck did go down, it's stuck there. I don't know, it could only turn around by driving into neighbors' driveways and doing like a three-point or a four-point turn. I think there's pluses and minuses with everything, but I think that we would certainly make actually Redstone Drive a net benefit from having proper turnaround. And I think we got the comment that people weren't really enthralled with my idea of having a vegetated island in the center. I just thought that would be aesthetically appealing, but I'm very happy to remove the island, because that didn't seem that that was received well.
Ty didn't?
No, I'd like to see some current plans. It's hard to comment on these when I know there's been a lot of changes since then.
Redstone is currently 26 feet wide?
Was it 22?
22.
No, the existing is Redstone Drive. The existing, the one that sits there right now.
Is paved 22 feet wide. The right-of-way is 50 feet wide.
Right, but when I used a scale on this, it looked like it was 26 currently.
It could be. We didn't actually go out and do field measurements. Again, this is preliminary based on whatever existing information we had.
I mean, it would be great if it's at least 24, if the new road could conform to the width of the existing road.
We can certainly measure that width.
I did measure it.
Oh, you did?
It's paved, paved into paved width is 22 feet.
Okay, because that's not the way the plan is shown, so... Okay, the other two questions I have. One, will you have to remove fill from the slot, from this area?
No, this is, I don't know, do you know the history of this?
I know the history, and I've walked it a couple of times.
It's a very interesting parcel, but we will not have, there won't be any net removal of fill from the site.
Okay. And secondly, will you have to blast to put in foundations?
No.
No. Okay.
No, we dug, we dig, we dug some test holes, and there was no issues on the test holes. Blasting is not necessary.
Okay, and you are requesting permission to do stone grinding?
And if that's not something the board's comfortable with, we can eliminate that.
What would the extent of that be?
When they, in the quarry operation, there's a lot of rubble.
Yes.
And it was my idea that the rubble could be crushed to use in the stone, excuse me, could be crushed to use in the roadway. Whether or not that's possible, I don't know. I had an engineer, I had my excavator tell me that the type of stone would not meet the town specifications for gravel, but if it did meet it, then that would be a nice source of gravel.
Well, it is sandstone, so I don't know, again, I'm an engineer, but I don't remember whether or not sandstone can be used.
And my engineer kind of shook, my excavator kind of shook as that.
I think it could be a real issue, because stone crushing is not a quiet operation, nor is it necessarily dust-free.
We would withdraw that if the board's not comfortable with it.
Yeah, because I think the abutters would be quite unhappy with an operation like that in there. It's right in the middle of a residential area, and it would be dirty and noisy. Those are my initial comments on this. Based on that, I'd be reluctant to give approval to the plan as presented. Okay, you've got our comments. I think if you come back to us with those comments answered, that we should reconsider it at that point, rather than give approval to something that really, we all agree has some problems, so...
Would we be able to get a comment, a copy of the written comments that have been put in so far?
Absolutely. Donna will be back tomorrow, and I will make sure the chief makes copies for you guys and sends them off. Okay?
Appreciate that.
Certainly, yeah, you need to get the comments. And again, I apologize if we're not getting out there, but it's been a tough week.
Yeah, these were serious teabugs first, so these are definitely your plans.
So, will these comments require another set of plans?
Yeah.
So, maybe you can drop them off to my...
Well, they, about what you said there.
If you look at the revised plans, a lot of the comments that you have, not having the water and not having a sewer, that is.
That is in there?
Yeah, they actually did a major revision on it.
So, DPW and Fire need to see these. I think they have seen them, okay? I don't, we still don't have fire hydrants on here.
Yeah, there's no fire hydrants.
Yeah, and we still have, we need to consider whether or not you're going to put something back here, and also...
It's not feasible to have someone be able to drive up through here. It's too big of a grade change to make it so this would be accessible.
The vacant lot's gone.
Yeah, the vacant lot is gone, I see that. We want to take these things out of here and show this at 26. At a minimum, is it possible to loop the water through Harwich?
That, I don't have any answer to that. I do know the town engineer was, we discussed that with the town engineer, and he was on the fence on whether it would be beneficial or not.
Because previously, the DPW has been pretty adamant about looping water, particularly on a long run like this.
If they required it, we would. Because I do know that water does come down Harwich.
Yeah.
And it certainly isn't that big of a stretch to go from there, so if that's something that would be beneficial.
And again, that's a fire protection thing as well. If there's interruption down here, you can get water from the other direction, which is pretty important.
The only other comment I might make is that it's certainly not at all possible, if that's, if this is what someone had in mind, that's not, that's not, no. It's a beautiful, what makes it nice is the ponds, they're man-made ponds.
Yes, they're quarries. But you're in riverfront area down there, and you've got other issues, so that would be a real problem. But I would ask you to reconsider whether or not you could regrade this or whatever in order to get that, take a look at it at least, because it would, from a public safety standpoint, having that back door is really important. And as I said, we've done it on Orchard, that was also a pretty steep grade coming down the hill, but they managed it, so, I have to know where Orchard Road is, but it's off of Parker Street.
I think I'll be taking a red.
Behind, behind where Bluebird Estates is, okay?
I hate to interrupt, but as far as, you mentioned it was pretty steep in another place. It can be accessed, but not at an 8% grade.
But, yeah, you were mentioning it's just for emergency vehicles and not traffic and so forth.
Well, the question would be, can you, is it possible to grade it, okay, to get an acceptable grade?
There are wetlands in there.
I don't see any wetlands shown on there. No, there are no wetlands there, not in that area.
The wetland line is here, that would be, that would be off of Jason.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. It would mean cutting through, rearranging Lots 6 and 7, but it, you know, it could be, I'd like you to take a look at that, take a hard look at that, whether that's possible.
Okay.
Okay, from a public safety standpoint. Okay, I think with that, I still feel uncomfortable approving even the revised plan at this point as a preliminary.
Okay.
I'd like to see the comments addressed in another preliminary plan, and then we should be able to go forward with it. So, how's the board feeling?
I see, I'm here.
I mean, we can take a vote if people wanted to, right?
No.
Rather than not at this point.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have an idea of a date for a continuation?
We'll continue it to, it's not a hearing, but we'll continue it to October, is it October 3rd? Time enough for you to get something done?
I think so.
Okay, and I don't have the agenda for the October 3rd, but since it's not a hearing, I don't have to give you a time, so we'll, I'll make sure that you be informed of what time it is.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Couple of minutes until 6:30. Can we do the waiver for pediatric services?
Waiver, site plan review, property owner is CGN Holdings LLC. Owner's address is 1051 Converse Street, Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Pediatric Services of Springfield, Inc. The owner of the business is Leif Norstrom. Business owner's address is 82 Oakland Street, Wolverham, Mass. Property address is 294 North Main Street, East Long Metal. Property is district, is allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, 9 to noon on Saturday. Total number of employees, including the owner, is 44 total for both locations, 20 in 294 North Main Street. Date of last parking plan is blank. Summary of business operation is pediatric offices, and the application has been signed and dated August 30th, 2017. And it looks like there's a business certificate, so...
Okay, this is going into the new medical office building that's being constructed. It's allowed use in the zone. The parking was approved under the site plan review, so it's pretty straightforward. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think it's 6:30, so we will move on to have a continuation of a public hearing on a proposed mixed-use overlay district bylaw. And do you folks have anything you want to propose at this point, or? We do have, they have provided us with suggested...
Should we come up, we stay here?
Come on up, please do, so we can hear you. Proposed changes to the use table and to the dimensional table.
This'll take a bit.
What?
This'll take a bit. That's okay.
I have looked through this briefly, I just got it today for the first time, so, but I don't see any problems. It's a, it's a great step forward to have it this way, so we have all of the uses laid out and all of the dimensional laid out. The dimensionals being proposed are the same as they are for the industrial garden park. The dimensionals being proposed are the same as they are for the industrial garden park. We all know a little bit more.
Any exceptions?
Very, oh, the use, the uses, yeah, there are some differences on the uses. Obviously, this is residential is allowed and multifamily housing is allowed. Okay, which is not in the IGP. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. The only one I wasn't sure of is why you would exclude daycare from it, but that was family daycare was taken out.
Really, I'm sorry, John, John Tykina from Eminem Realty Partners. Eminem means Long Meadow with Joe Conley from M and A East Long Meadow. And we're the joint venture partners. Joe Conley represents the owner, Eminem. The, the thinking was just that it, it wasn't that this type of use doesn't typically lend itself to a family or a, a home daycare, you know, I view that as the, you know, somebody watching two people in their house type of thing. Don't have any objection to including it, you know, but it was something that we just didn't think was.
Was gonna fit.
Was necessary, it was gonna fit.
Okay.
In terms of, we did include regular childcare, cuz that actually is something that we actually have in most of our centers, including in our mixed-use, you know, communities just like this. Where we find that, that, you know, for residents, that is really a, and our businesses, that's really a very desired, you know, a very desired amenity. So, you know, we would typically like to have childcare itself, but not necessarily a family, you know.
I, I haven't had a chance to check with, to check the state law yet, but I know that family home daycares are covered specifically under state law. As to certain places, you have to let them go. And I, I haven't really had a chance to research that yet.
Okay.
For this type of.
Obviously, we would seek to comply with state law, so.
Yeah, I just, you know, again, I'm not saying it does, it is required or it's not, I, I just don't know. I would have to look that up. For the rest of this, it's pretty straightforward in terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed.
And, you know, we tried to just really follow what was, what was there in, in, you know, in some of the, the business districts. You know, don't have a, you know, there's really not a, you know, stick the, stick the shovel in the ground, have to have or.
Yeah.
You know, stick the shovel in the ground, can't have at all. You know, I think is, as we were going through, things that are important are retail, restaurants. We understand it would be a special permit consistent with where it is everywhere else in town. Offices, including medical offices, so we could have a doctor's office or a pediatrician's office, like you just said. And, and personal services, you know, the hair and nails and all those things. Anything beyond that is.
Supermarket.
Um, supermarket is, is interesting.
Yeah.
Becau, well, no, because there are two German grocers that are expanding dramatically in, in, in America and have started on the east coast with frankly, communities like yours. And we are doing several of them for Aldi and for Lidl as the other company. They are not, their supermarkets closer to a Trader Joe's, if that would be something that, that you might be familiar with. So they're smaller, so an Aldi is nineteen thousand square feet, a, a Lidl is twenty-three thousand square feet. So they're kinda small.
Aldi's business model is not East Long Meadow.
Changed.
No, Aldi's business model has changed.
When?
Um, in two thousand fifteen.
And, and show me other communities surrounding here that have an Aldi of a similar demographic.
They probably don't, but the, the one that, the, the two that I'm doing. One is in, in Tampa, Florida, in a, in a high-end community called Westlake. And the other is in Palm Beach, Florida, in, in Palm Beach County, Florida, in Boynton Beach, Florida. Again, a, a high-end demographic. Their Florida headquarters is actually in Palm Beach Gardens. So the Aldi of two thousand seventeen is not the Aldi of two thousand and ten. High-end, fresh, fresh produce, organic, you know, large organic section, et cetera. So very different. So it is not the cut up, cut open the box and leave it on the, in a pallet on the floor model that probably characterized their first fifteen hundred stores in America. When they went for density, not necessarily for market. They have changed fairly dramatically.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Seeing that there are other supermarkets other than Aldis, I would, I would like to see that either as a no or a special permit. Cuz it opens the door for, for many, many, many.
That's fine, one of the things that, and again, Mr., Mr. Member was saying from last time, you brought up Cherry Hill and, you know, where we have our, our other community.
And you pulled your hair out.
Yes, because the, the ordinance, the ordinance is so, but I did get approved that. You know, I, I did get the, but I was home in New Jersey in bed before they finished in Cherry Hill for, for that approval. But, um, in any event, just that ordinance, it's cumbersome and it's unwieldy. And I actually spent my entire trip home, like on the phone with people, trying to explain the, the different aspects of it. But it really makes me valuable in my company, I'm the only one that understands it. But the thing that did strike me is, is one of the things that, that that ordinance has is it allows only a certain percentage of uses of certain sizes. So what I was thinking was that, you know, there could only be one use that was up to twenty-five thousand square feet and that's it. And you put a cap on an individual retailer size so that we keep it, you know, we keep it smaller. And that there can't be any more than two uses that are up to fifteen thousand square feet. You know, so that, you know, and I'm thinking, you know, a pharmacy and a Trader Joe's, you know, is, is the, you know, that are. You know, Trader Joe's are thirteen, a pharmacy is, you know, fourteen, five. That type of, of, you know, size restriction might give some of that, give the board some comfort that the grocer that, the grocer that you'd be talking about for this site or for this type of use would not be a stop and shop. You know, it's not sixty-five thousand feet and, and all those types of things. It's a different, you know.
So what's your cap on the grocery store size for, for this project?
This is something we could address under standards and conditions.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so, so we, we kinda wrote this in two pieces and there is a, there's like verbiage that would go, I guess, in section six, is that where it would go in the bylaw?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
In chapter six, so we'd get it, like a mixed use overlay would get a, would get a chap, you know, a chapter in, in subchapter six.
Yeah.
And, and there you could say, you know, only, you know, only one retailer of up to twenty-five thousand square feet, no more than, you know, and even say, or no more than two retailers that are up to fifteen thousand square feet. So that we, we acknowledge that we're only gonna have, you know, up to thirty thousand square feet of stuff that's.
Yeah.
That scale and then the rest of it's gonna be the two, three, four, five thousand, you know, scale.
And John, I think it would be chapter five is where most of that would go.
Five?
Under the conditions and standards.
Okay.
But, you know, we'll, we'll find a place for that. The, one of the things that our director suggested is that if, once you, you have written the bylaw, proposed bylaw and, and we sort of come to a agreement on that, we would then write the standards and conditions, okay? So you would propose the bylaw and we would propose standards and conditions on, on that, that district, okay? So that would be standard and condition for a supermarket would be in this district, not to exceed X, Y, Z.
Mm-hmm.
That sort of thing, we, we can get there. I think, I looked at the dimensional ones and I noticed that you're proposing a maximum height of sixty feet, four hundred feet back. That would be the, a, a new height standard for the town. I think the highest we have in town so far is fifty feet, okay? The sixty would give you, what, a six-story building basically?
No, it's actually four. You measure roof to the peak, so it's four and a, and the roof.
Okay.
So I mean, if you wanted to say four stories, sixty feet, and that would maybe give comfort that we're not talking a six-story building. It's four stories on the roof, not, um, not a six-story building.
All I'm saying is that that would be a new height standard for, for the town and something we need to consider. I was wondering why you have a minimum density on, on housing units? I understand a maximum density, okay, which I think we still need to, to think about. You mentioned that forty acres at twenty would give you the option of up to eight hundred units. You weren't thinking of going there. If you can give it some thought and tell us what you think your, your target number of units is, then we should adjust the density to that. But I don't know why you're putting a minimum density in there. Because that, that would sort of keep you from doing this in stages, okay? Because if you, if you don't have enough units at the start, you're under the minimum density.
Well, you get one approval and then you build it in stages.
Okay.
So you.
Possibly, I mean, sometimes people will do the design in stages, see how the first stage works out and then, you know, do the second.
No, we wouldn't.
You wouldn't be doing that?
No, we would do, for a forty-acre site, we would get one, one approval.
Why, why the, why the minimum density?
Uh, well, because the feeling was, well, one, we must have seen that somewhere, but, um, we must have seen that somewhere. But it, just the feeling was that it's a different product. It's a different place, it's a different look and feel. And for it to function and be the type of place that we, that we think it is, it needs a certain amount of stuff.
It helps assure that it's a mixed use.
Yeah.
You know, and it.
That's all.
And it helps assure that you're getting that, that market demographic that is, you know, a couple of, a one or two-person household. It's not family housing, it's not those types of things. It's, it is the, you know, it is the millennial, it is the, the empty nesters, you know, moving out of the five-bedroom house. And that level of density kind of encourages that. You know, that we would, that we would hit that, you know, that type of thing.
The, the twenty maximum, I think, is kind of sticker shock to all of us because that eight hundred units, two people per unit, sixteen hundred new residents, that's almost ten percent of the current population of the town.
That's a lot, yeah.
I, I think, I think when we were, I think when we were speaking with Ms. McDonald, she said it was like more than had happened in the past forty years combined.
Might be true.
It might be, no, and, and we understand, and again, we, we must have seen that somewhere. But, um, no, I, I mean, our thinking is it's, it's somewhere in the middle.
Okay.
Between twelve and six, between twelve and twenty, so you wanna say sixteen and, you know, we're in that, we're in that ballpark.
Who run in the numbers on how many you've gotta have to make this work, okay? That's not our concern, but I think we would like to see, I personally would like to see a density number written into it that will get you what you need without giving us this sticker shock of sixteen hundred new people in town all at once, okay? We, we all understand that with MGM going in downtown, that there are gonna be a lot of one and two-family households that are coming into this area that are not here now because they're gonna be managing that place and running it. Not thinking so much necessarily of the, the lower-wage people, but they're gonna have a lot of high, highly-paid people in there. You know, the floor managers and all that kind of thing. And that's, this is the kind of housing that they're gonna be looking for. And so we need to think about how many people the town can absorb. And you need to think about how many people you need to have, how many units you have to have there to make this feasible project. And then let's try and reach a number on density that is comfortable to both of us that way. Okay, I think the twenty is just a little high.
Agreed.
You know, but I don't wanna put a number on it because I don't know, you know, what you guys need in terms of numbers. And we're also thinking ahead that we wanna go to the town council with a proposal that they feel comfortable with in terms of actually putting into the bylaw, cuz they're the ones that do the ultimate vote on it. And if they see a too larger number of folks, of units coming in all at once, they may balk at that. I'm not trying to second guess it, you know, we don't wanna have it thrown back here after all this work, so.
Well, I, again, we, we proposed between twelve and twenty, if you wanted to say between twelve and sixteen, that would, that would work.
Why don't you go back and run your numbers and, and come to us with it, okay? We are gonna continue this again, so, you know, we're not there yet, but we're getting there, I think, and, and that's good. You've answered, I think, my questions, and anyone else have questions here? I've been dominating this conversation.
No, I think that if they add Alitals or Aldis, it's gonna generate a lot more traffic because a lot of people from the outside are gonna go to Aldis. I mean, it is, it is a popular store, people do like to go to it and it's just gonna, it's gonna be a traffic situation, I think.
Time to think about, yeah.
So I, thank you for taking out funeral establishment.
Yeah.
Greatly appreciate that. But the other question is just the forestry, wood harvesting, tree farm, nursery?
It's, it was just carried forward in the industrial garden, it can go. Again, the only, I'll, I'll be very, the only four are retail, restaurant, just personal service and office. Any, you wanna make it five and throw daycare in there, great. Other than, other than that, they could all go.
Well, this is much, much, much nicer than last time, much easier to understand.
And it's your language.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, thank you.
We understand.
And I personally wanna take some time and go through this on my own time, not, this is the first time I'm seeing this personally, so.
We were responding and.
And I, and I guess I just wanna go back to the veterinarian hospital. I just don't see it as a professional office, a doggy daycare maybe. But I, I think of a vet office, I think of, you know, East Long Meadow veterinarian hospital. It just seems kinda be a standalone, not part of a retail mix.
Okay.
I don't know how anyone else feels, but.
I, I don't have a problem with it personally, again.
I have my five and that's it. Anything else, we're just, we're just a combination.
Right, you need your five.
Those are the five, those are the five that are, that are gonna wanna be here. You know, and the vet, you know, I, again, my, you know, my sister-in-law's a vet, I'm.
Oh, you're biased.
I'm biased, but that's fine, it's, you know.
But much nicer, thank you.
And I think forestry, we, again, we need to check state law on that because forestry is a cult, another realm of agriculture.
Yeah, and again, it just carried, it carried over from the garden, yeah.
The, the other issue that we're still, I'm, I'm still struggling with, I think some of the other members are, is the overlay zone versus a straight zone, okay? I've done a little, little personal research on spot zoning. I don't, I have a feeling that because of the size of the parcel and because it abuts a residential area, and this is gonna be primarily residential, that we wouldn't have a problem with that. Still am concerned with the comment that was brought up last time that if we do it as an overlay zone, then we can overlay it anywhere in the industrial garden park. And so we turn, we could be turning industrial garden park into a mixed-use zone overall. Whereas if we make it just this parcel in this zone, we have better control over it. And, you know, it, it's, it's something that I think we're all struggling with.
Very, very much so.
And.
If you can get, and I'll, you know, you figure out a count, you know, if council can get over the spot zoning issue, doesn't matter us.
Okay.
You know, we were just looking at it and saying, what if we set industrial garden parks that were within X feet of the center of town?
Yeah.
And you draw, you, you stick a pit in the, in the middle of rotary.
Forty acres and you could narrow the, the map so that it excludes others.
Well, the, the problem is that any, anybody can buy four ten-acre parcels and stick them together, okay?
Absolutely.
You know, and, and that's, there are still empty parcels in the industrial park, garden park. And some of the buildings there are, they're basic industrial buildings, they're nothing fancy. And if somebody felt they could make a better profit with a mixed use than with an industrial. And if somebody felt they could make a better profit with a mixed use than with an industrial, um, you know, that, that, that's an issue for me. Um, we have asked town council, I believe, to, or will, one or the other, to look into the issue of the spot zoning.
Okay.
Uh, there's an awful lot of case law on that, uh, all over the place. And I'm not one to dig into it.
It has been asked.
Yeah. Our, our director can do some of that, but we really need to get, um, town council to weigh in on it. There's nothing, it's really surprising, in chapter forty, there's nothing, uh, in the zoning law that actually addresses spot zoning, if you look at it. Um, it's all case law. And, uh, it just, all it says is it has to be consistent within the zone. Okay? So, um, again, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not sure how to interpret that. But going to the mass.gov site, uh, there's very little on it, except a few case law things. So we need somebody who knows what they're talking about to, to dig into this and give us an answer. Any other questions from the board?
Not at this time.
Continue it to, um, October third. Does that give you enough time to do some more work? And, uh, what time will that be?
Tonight, yeah.
Let's say, um-
Four o'clock.
I know.
Let's say six-thirty again, on October third. So that, um, have a motion to continue to six-thirty on October third.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Should, um, should we communicate with town council in the meantime? Would that be helpful?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
Good.
Um, we can, um, we can talk offline.
Okay, good. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Getting there. Thank you.
And thank you for wanting to come to our town.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I think we're still all excited.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay. We have a continuation of a public hearing, special permit and site plan review for AMG Retail LLC at two-twenty-seven Shaker Road. Please, identify yourself for the tape and-
Ed Sabella, representing AMG.
Okay.
Uh, last time we were here, uh, we asked for an amendment of the plan to change the name uh, from, I think it was, uh, Ellie Belcher had the permit previous to us. And, uh, one of the conditions that the, uh, board was seeking was the erection of a fence around the detention basin. I presume that, uh, Michael Smith's, uh-
Is this one? No, it's this one. Yeah, this is, this one came in at two-thirty this afternoon. So nobody has had a chance to look at it yet.
I apologize.
And they rolled it.
Okay, yeah, they rolled it the wrong way, so we don't know.
Uh, and, and the, my understanding is that the, that the construction will be completed in the next two weeks, so.
Okay.
So as far as approving the plan and, and the actual, uh, construction, I think that'll be almost simultaneous.
The, the other issue we had was hours?
Yes. I, I spoke with my client about the hours, and the hours were a significant factor in their decision to invest in this project and to buy the property. The twenty-four-seven hours, uh, was a factor. And, um, they, that, that's the reason they, they decided to buy it. Since they've, uh, since the operation has never been up and running, and since there hasn't been any, uh, changes and issues, uh, they've relied on the board's approval of those hours in making that decision. Any reduction in those hours would have a serious, serious negative impact on their, on their business plan and their business model. So they want to continue to op, well, they want to operate the thing with, with the hours as previously approved by the board.
We've received a lot of input from, uh, residents of the town um, since this was approved for Belcher. And uniformly, I get the impression that people do not want twenty-four-seven. Um, and we have to respect that because you're the residents of our town. Personally, I would like to see, um, hours put in there and hours less than twenty-four-seven. That's my personal opinion. How the board feels about that?
I, I can understand that that was part of their, uh, process going down the financial road. Would they be willing to do what other gas stations of their caliber of the size in town have done and lessen the hours?
Yeah.
Um, well, due to, we've done some research and talked to some people, including, you know, our police and fire constituents over the course of the last three, four months, and it's come, as George said, to become aware to me that a lot of our townspeople are not in favor of that.
Mm-hmm.
And that was approved by a different board than, than the board that sits here now, and the ownership has changed.
Todd?
Well, we've received an awful lot of pushback in hours in the last two months. Um, and because of that, it's really created, um, a lot of attention in town. And, uh, there's been a lot of opposition to hours that are twenty-four-seven.
They've relied, they've relied on the board in approving this. Uh, this would be a serious interference with their business model.
Well, they, they should have understood that they needed a new special permit.
Yeah, but the amendment that we're asking for is a change in name.
Right.
We're not asking, there's, uh, I would like the board to identify the reason other than the town opinion why this operation that's never been up and running is going to have its hours changed. What is the, what is the change in circumstances that the board is going to rely on to change their operation?
Basically, the complaint, the concerns of the abutters in the residential area, which abut, which is right across the street from this, that's the main issue. I've also had issues, have, people have raised issues of increased traffic at night, of people coming up from Connecticut to use the station because it's going to be cheaper than Connecticut, because the taxes are different. Um, that, which would increase traffic on Shaker Road, um, at night. Again, a concern of, of those who live on or use Shaker Road. That's, that's what we've heard. And we do have the right to amend the special permit anytime it comes before us. And, uh, depending on how the rest of the board feels, um, I, I would think that we, we would exercise that right.
I wasn't a member of the last board that voted on this. And I think it's very clear that I did that research and presented it during the previous two proposals that a certain set of hours cover every single shift of the major employers in the surrounding community. They cover the prisons, they cover Lennox, they cover Carmonde, they cover Bay State Medical Center, either before or after shifts. So there, I didn't see a need for a twenty-four-hour operation. And the argument, the previous group who sought twenty-four-hour service, put that out there as a, uh, you know, as a need to stay open twenty-four hours. And I didn't buy it based upon that research. I, I don't see it now.
Uh-huh.
And if necessary, I think I can probably verbatim put that, those hours of operations into the record if it's so necessary.
Yeah, I wasn't part of the original special permit either, either. Um, and I'm gonna just, I, I don't think there's a need for twenty-four-seven operation because it covers all the shift, just like Russ did. He did the exercise. It made sense.
So the sense I get from the board is that we are going to amend it with specific hours that are not twenty-four-seven. And, uh, given that, I would ask that you go back to your client again, and either have that, either they will propose hours that they think are reasonable and will allow them to operate successfully, or we will make up the hours. Okay? I would rather have them propose hours. But if, um, if they don't, then we will look at the hours that other stations have been permitted, and we will, um, put in hours that are consistent with that. Okay?
When do you want, next meeting?
Yep, if that's possible. The other thing, uh, quickly, uh, in the, uh, special permit for Belcher, there was a requirement that, um, you notify the board when or, and if you have a co-brand identified. And I don't know whether you have a co-brand yet or not. Okay? I know they've been advertising for employees already. But I don't know, um, whether that, whether that means they, they know who's going to be running the convenience store or not, whether they're going to run it themselves.
All right.
So we, we would like to know-
As soon as we know, we'll notify you.
Yeah, okay, because that, that is in the, the original special permit. Do I have a motion to approve the site plan?
So moved.
Do you have further discussion on the site plan? I mean, it's basically as-built, um, they're putting a fence around the detention basin. Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the site plan at least is approved. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, when, when is the next meeting?
The next meeting will be October third at six-forty-five.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll see you then. Hopefully we'll have something that you-
Point of order, George?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. As a continuation of the public hearing, I'm not sure if anybody is here that wants to say anything for-
Okay, well, we haven't taken a vote on the continuation yet, so.
Okay.
If they're, I'll, we'll open up to the public for comment at this point.
I'm not sure I have anything to say other than I said at the last meeting. I just wanted to make sure that people had an opportunity.
And anyone else wish to speak? Please, identify yourself.
Mary Ellen Fish, two-fifty-nine Chestnut Street. Definitely do not want to see it open twenty-four-seven. And if you've all checked the major employers and the hours those employees are coming and going, I think that's good enough for the hours that the place should be operating.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else want to speak at this point? If, if please?
Yeah, Lauren, two-twenty-six Shaker Road.
Can you repeat that? Sorry?
Yeah, Lauren, two-twenty-six Shaker Road. I, I just want to say I agree with Mary Ellen, um, and I'm against the twenty-four-seven, which is what I stated last time.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the continuation?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got some waivers to do. We've got Judy Ainsworth for Shaker Bowl.
Okay.
Uh, waiver of site plan review, property owner is Shaker Court Bowl, uh, NE, or New England, I guess. Uh, owner's address is five-oh-six Hercules Drive, Fullchester, Vermont. Uh, phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Sunday Night Mixed. Uh, owner of business is Judy Ainsworth. Uh, business owner's address is nineteen Robbins Road, Munson, Mass. Property address is one-sixty-eight Shaker Road, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property district is business, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are Sunday, six to nine P.M. Number of employees is one. Uh, the summary of the business is a bowling league treasurer. The application's been signed and dated September fifth, two thousand seventeen.
So she wants to run a bowling league at the bowling alley.
Yep.
Okay.
For her.
I couldn't understand what it was from the application.
Yeah, at least she applied, right?
She applied?
She applied.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next one's more interesting.
Okay, this will be a sign permit. Are you ready for a sign permit?
No, uh, waiver from the Apple Place.
Waiver, Apple Place?
What do you think?
Add to the agenda.
We're putting a corn maze in.
All right, waiver of site plan review, Cynthia Bellrose. Uh, owner's address is five-forty Summers Road. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is the Apple Place. Uh, owner of business is Cynthia Bellrose, Bella Rose. Uh, business owner's address is, uh, five-forty Summers Road. Property address is the same. District is Residential A. Uh, proposed hours of operation is a corn maze, which will be Saturday and Sunday from eleven to six. Number of employees, including the owner, will be four. Uh, date of last parking plan is not applicable. It's an agricultural use. Summary of business is agricultural use, corn maze, corn-corn maze. The application's been signed and dated September twelfth, two thousand seventeen.
So, would you like to tell us what you're planning? Uh, we, this came up in, in Mass Live, I guess, we saw that you were doing the corn maze, and had no idea of whether this was going to be like the big one out in Sunderland or, you know, what the traffic and, and the parking were going to be. Because I know you challenged a little bit on parking as it is.
Yeah, so, um, it's five acres, the field where the corn maze is.
Okay, is that behind you?
That's the one that abuts, um, the properties on Hammond Road, the very last field. So, um, there's a, quite a large field, um, where the four-car garage is. So that, people can all park there. Then there's another field in between. Um, so we had, um, Hartline come, and they put lines on.
Oh, good.
And he said, minimum one-hundred-and-twelve parking spaces.
Okay, and do you have a, a sort of a sketch so people can see what it sort of looks like?
I can do it quickly.
Well, okay.
I tried to print off Google Earth, and it wouldn't work.
Okay. Are they accessing it from your property or accessing it from Parker Street?
From my property.
Going to your place?
Coming through.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we're down near where the chicken coop is, they're taking a left.
Okay.
And, um, they can travel all the way down to the field.
Okay.
All the way down to the corn maze itself and park down there.
Right, okay. So there, there's plenty of parking, the, the traffic will, should not be really bad.
Yeah.
Um, there, there's plenty of room between where they're parking and where they exit so that we shouldn't be tracking a whole lot of dirt off the field and onto the road.
It's grass.
It's grass, yeah. But after the rain, you know what happens? Yeah, tomorrow afternoon, it may be a quagmire, okay? But, okay, that, that makes sense. We wanted to get a good sense of what you were planning on doing and make sure that we had, by having the, the waiver, um, if there are issues that show up later, we can revisit them. At least we know what's going on, okay?
Yeah. I just want to let you know, um, Paul Morissette came.
Okay.
He reviewed everything.
Okay.
So we have fire extinguishers out there, we have a safety plan, we have radios, and-
Good.
So he was satisfied. The police came, the safety officer for the, for the police came, and he, he said they didn't have any issues either.
Okay, good. And did you actually operate it last weekend?
We didn't.
And how did it go? Well?
Very well.
Yeah, but not, it's not crazy. You know, it was very hot, so.
Yeah, yeah. It always takes time for the word to get out, so, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, great responses, though, from the people that went through.
I think it's a great idea.
Really enjoyed it.
I think it's a great idea. I was concerned about traffic and parking because we didn't know what your setup was.
A lot of people don't know there's so much back there.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, yeah. Yeah, there's a ton back there.
And the fact that Mr. Morissette came is, is definitely-
And I, I didn't know whether they were coming in off Parker Street because the people on Parker Street would not be aware of this.
Yeah, and that's fields owned by John Bernie, the next one over, so.
The next one over, okay, got it. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
So you're gonna, you're gonna enter from your major, from your initial entrance?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Or you're gonna exit? From the existing exit?
Yes.
The same exit that we've been using.
So it's a, it's a one-way.
So you have to kind of sneak back through there?
Yeah, it's straight.
It's a straight shot from the fields, from the corn maze, straight out the exit.
Yeah, it is.
It's a little curve.
The chicken coop are here, the exit's here, so you come right straight out.
It's almost a straight shot.
We have staff, you know, for parking if it, um-
And is it a paid maze? Do you pay a fee to that?
Yes. It, it costs quite a bit to have it done, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I would imagine.
So is that why they're here, because it's paid?
Yeah, it's a bit, it's a, it's a new use for their business. It's an agricultural use, so it's allowed. But we wanted to make sure that, you know, if it turned out to be a huge attraction, that we weren't going to run into trouble with parking. One thing-
We'll address it then.
You're hoping you have to address that.
We're hoping you have that problem.
Yes.
I mean, the, the one thing that, that obviously we want to avoid is anybody parking on Summers Road.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they're going to get killed if they do that, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
If we have that problem, we'll, we'll have to address that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Well, good, please.
Um, what are you doing regarding signage? What are you doing regarding signage? Are you, are you adding additional signs?
For the corn maze itself?
Yeah, is this going to require additional signage, or are you just relying on the signage you already have on the property?
I would like to put a corn maze sign out front, temporary, just on the weekend.
Yeah, you already had one last weekend.
I did.
Yeah. That brings up another issue that, just to surface it, obviously, as a agricultural business, you exempt from certain things, particularly on, on signage. However, concerns have been brought up about signs that are not on your property, that are elsewhere in town, and particularly the ones that are on town property, like guardrails and so on.
I see.
Yeah, those are not allowed, okay? And, and before we tie up our building inspector with running around trying to tear down signs, just, you know...
Sure, they're gone.
Yeah.
Well, we, he talked to us. We didn't, we've been putting them there for literally eight years, so...
I know.
So, we didn't, you know, they were just going one day, and we didn't know.
Using sure for town.
So, you know, we haven't put them up since.
That's good. Because particularly the guardrail at the end of Chestnut Street becomes a bulletin board for diabetes strips and everything else, and, you know, we're trying to keep it clean.
Other unmentionables.
Any other questions?
No, just thank you for running a nice business.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Very good.
Good. And we have a sign permit.
Can I just ask a question about your signs? You made her take down her signs, but there's signs out there for Irish apple...
Yeah, there's an Irish Bend Orchard.
Yeah, East Long Meadow.
That, that's something you take up with the zoning enforcement officer, which is the building inspector. Okay, he's the one that enforces that, okay? So, he would have to take action on that.
But you, you made her take down her signs, and she has a business in East Long Meadow. That business isn't even in East Long Meadow.
We, we're not making her take down the signs, we're telling her that they're not allowed under the bylaw, and that if there's anybody else out there with signs like that, the building inspector is the one who will enforce against them and take them down, okay? But you have to make him aware of the fact that they're there, because he can't be everywhere in town. So, if you call the building department...
Who's the building inspector?
Where is the sign?
There's one at the bottom of Keys Road, as you're going to, well, it's on Shaker, but it's right, you see it at the bottom. And there's another one somewhere else. I think there's one in, on Shaker Road, as you're coming down Chestnut.
Okay, thank you.
If, if you call the building department, okay, just, when you call town hall, hit the extension for the building department, you'll get connected with somebody there, and either it'll be the building inspector, or it will be one, someone who works for him, and they will take the message and get it to him, okay?